Good evening. Welcome to the Town Council Heritage Preservation Review Board Joint Work Session, Monday, December 2nd, 2019.
Good evening, everyone. I'll call the meeting to order and welcome everyone. Thank you for joining us this evening. We do have two members that will be absent this evening. Councilmember Baker is away on business and Eric Bowle is ill and unable to join us. So for the rest of you, thank you for taking an extra night out of your long after-holiday weekend and joining us here. And I'm also pleased to see such a large crowd. Welcome Chairman Walker and Vice Mayor Olem. I'm pleased to be sitting between these two. I'd like to wish you a very heartfelt word to go to start off the evening. A little iron bull action going over here. Tonight's joint work session is the first opportunity for us as a group to review and discuss the draft Heritage Preservation Overlay District Guidelines and Resource Guide that's been developed and presented by the project consultants and our town staff. We have received some comments already on this item. They've been entered into the record and I believe everyone has a copy of those this evening. And I just wanted to open by saying just a little, first off, that none of us at the table sitting here today, no members of the board, including myself, have seen this draft, these draft guidelines. We thought it was really important for everyone to get the first glance at the same time. So tonight's, the very beginning of what I think will be a lengthy process in reviewing these guidelines. So I don't want anyone to have the notion that a decision's going to be made quickly or any time in the next few weeks. It's going to be a long process and we're going to have multiple opportunities to hear from the public after this evening. I think our goal tonight is to see what has been presented and we'll talk a little bit about the history of how we got here. And our goal is to take a quick overview and see, is this going in the direction that we had hoped so that the staff and consultants can continue on what has already been a long journey and will continue to be. Before I turn it over to Bryce Perry, who's our Deputy Director of Community Development, Mr. Town Manager, did you have anything to add to that?
Yes, sure, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to just open the discussion by saying, you know, when I was still acting Town Manager, we were in our retreat and the council was very forceful in their discussions about the need for us to take a good look at the HPRB guidelines. It's a project that was languishing out there for a while and needed to be re-energized and sparked. And in this conversation, you all made it clear to staff that you wanted the guidelines to be more clear and easy to understand, both in terms of the residents in the districts and how it applies to their situations, as well as for the board to adjudicate issues as it came through, as they saw those things. You also wanted to make the guidelines easier to apply so there would decrease inconsistency among decisions, both in terms of the council and in the board. You asked me to clarify the differences between contributing and non-contributing structures. You wanted us to take a look at newer materials, products that are available in the marketplace that may or may not be appropriate under the guidelines. You also wanted to streamline the process and empower staff through an increased number of items that could be approved administratively if possible, again, to try to help homeowners adapt more quickly to their situations so that they wouldn't have to wait to go through a long, lengthy process if it could possibly be avoided. So that's kind of the directives we launched this effort out on. And we engaged a consultant to come in and discuss it. What you're going to see tonight is a working draft of where we are, based on inputs, and you're going to be walked through the project to date and then you're going to be brought into what this thing is looking like. So anyway, I'll, with your indulgence, if I turn it over to Bryce, he can certainly start painting additional detail to this question.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Welcome, everybody. Hope you're having a good night. So tonight is really an important milestone for us as we go on this quest to institute some more systemic changes to the town's preservation program. The guidelines and the resource guide, which is what we'll be discussing this evening, are really two, the two major components of that greater effort. So we're thrilled to have the project consultants on hand here tonight with us to give us a more detailed rundown of exactly where we are in the development of both of those. We have both project managers, Mel from Work Program Architects and Paige from Commonwealth Preservation Group here. I'm going to be passing the baton off to them here in a little bit for the principal presentation. However, before doing so, I did want to quickly go over some of the other initiatives that are being implemented, again, as part of this greater effort to improve and enhance the preservation program in the town. So in addition to the new guidelines and the resource guide for district property owners, the application deadline and meeting date schedule, that's a change that has been enacted already recently. And the purpose there was to really streamline on the back end, make some streamlined changes to the operations, and then on the front end, allow for some more flexibility and allow for more response for applicants on the front end, for both applicants and board members. New architectural surveys have been completed for the entire district. This provides us with up-to-the-date, much more accurate architectural data sets that then staff and the board can then pull from, rely on, as we're evaluating an application in the proper context. Uniform sign standards are being created. This will allow for administrative approval of signs within the district. Several certificate of appropriateness applications are also being developed that will allow for more administrative approval of minor exterior changes, much like fences and paint colors are administratively approved today. Procedure guides for external customers like applicants are being developed. These will clearly and concisely lay out the process, so it will set those expectations early and make the process as predictable as possible. The district awareness campaign, this is something that's been sort of ongoing and will continue to expand with further recommendations from the project consultants. Purpose here really is to enhance the visibility of the district, better communicate what the purpose and intent of the district is and what it means to live in the district, and then getting the district community more actively engaged. So Mel and Paige are going to go into some really good ideas that they have regarding this. But some of the things that staff have been doing already include sending out the district newsletter more frequently, continuing to enhance the available information and capability of the district-specific webpages on the town's website, such as allowing for online applications, sending out welcome letters to new district property owners, and designing and installing district-specific wayfinding signage. Those are just some of the items from an awareness standpoint that are also being worked on. And lastly, the last bullet point here, developing a more regular program for training and education for board members primarily, but possibly for property owners as well in the district. And this isn't just training opportunities, formal conferences or classes, but this would also be local-led, staff-led sessions and workshops that might be a little bit more geared, specific to the issues that we're facing in our district. So we have a lot going on here. Again, the guidelines, the resource guide are major components of that. And really, the guidelines in some way is what's going to tie a lot of these other things together. So we're obviously very keen on making sure we get this right, making sure that this works for everybody as it's intended to work.
Bryce, can you explain what the new meeting schedule is and how it's going to make it better? I don't quite understand that.
Sure. That's something that has been enacted now for quite a while, for the past year. But the meetings before were scheduled very close together. So it was a Wednesday work session and then it was a Monday public hearing. That didn't allow for applicants to respond to board member comments at the work session and then so it eventually led to a lot more cases that were being discontinued to the next month, thus adding time on for the applicant. So we now have separated into, I believe it's the, is it the first Wednesday and the third Wednesday of every month? So there's more time there in between now. And that has worked out better for the administrative side of things as well. It allows us to do a second dispatch to the board if, in case there are changes made to the case after the work session. That's a good question. The last thing I just wanted to go through here quickly is, this meeting tonight is being aired. It is being recorded. It will be available on the town's video service webpage later on. The draft guidelines, when they, as soon as they are available, will also be posted on the town's website. We, of course, do welcome public comment that can be submitted through the website or through the email shown here, and also through the comment box that's on the website shown here as well. And as the mayor pointed out, this is one more step that gets us closer, but there's still a lot of steps left to occur and there's going to be a lot more opportunity for public input along the way. Once the draft guidelines are complete, a fully public meeting will be scheduled. And then, of course, following that, there'll be a number of work sessions and then hearings with the board and with the town council. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mel and Paige. Any questions on any of that? Good? Okay.
Okay. Thank you so much for being here tonight and making time for this. I'm Mel with WPA.
I'm Paige Pollard with Commonwealth Preservation Group.
And we have, we have a brief agenda this evening. We'd like this to be as interactive as possible, so please jump in with questions or comments at any time. But we're going to go through the following steps. We want to do a quick report out on all of the findings from our interviews and from the public outreach. Then we want to kind of zoom back and just reset our purpose. What is the purpose of a local historic or heritage district? And what are the national trends? What's happening everywhere else in the country? Then we want to kind of zoom into the details. From everything we heard, what are the major areas of concern? And how can the revised guidelines address these concerns? As well as, how can they not address some of the current concerns that are out there? Then we're going to give you a preview of the layout and the draft of the guidelines, as well as the new resource guide. And then we'll talk about the integration of the new process with the guidelines. We'll talk about relationship maintenance and how important it is that for a town or a city to support guidelines, that there has to be ongoing maintenance of relationships within the district. And then we'll look at schedule and next steps. So does that sound like a good agenda? Big zoom out. This is kind of a funny photo, but we wanted to talk about preservation and kind of the polarizing effects it has on the country, especially at this point in time. And so some of you may look at this image and see really empowered community citizens protecting something that they love. And other people may see this image and think about people standing in the way of progress. And so there's two really different perspectives. At the same time, these are articles from really the past year and things happening in Virginia and in other states in the country where historic guidelines are really under fire and are being really heavily critiqued. And so where Herndon is in this very moment where you're questioning the guidelines and you're asking a lot of questions about the heritage district is really right where the rest of the country is as well. So we'll talk a little bit more about that as we move forward. We wanted to be very clear, right up front, the differences that we have tackled in moving from the old guidelines to the new guidelines. So the old guidelines are very text-heavy, just full paragraphs of text. And chapters one through five are really history and background. And so in the new guidelines, we will link to and preserve a lot of that history and background, but we're really going to dive straight into the meat of what everyone has been asking for. We really tried to put ourselves in the shoes of citizens and property owners who are trying to navigate the guidelines. And what we realized is that the existing guidelines don't really tell someone how to do something. Gives you a lot of good information, gives you, as Paige said, a little master's in architectural history, but it's hard to understand what to do with your property. The rehab guideline diagrams are excellent, and we saw that comment from a lot of HPRB members. So we want to move those forward and carry them over to the new guidelines. So for the new guidelines, we're making it as user-friendly as possible. Every section is color-coded, it's numbered, it is very clear from the very beginning where to go. And what we've heard across the board, 143 different people said it was very confusing to know where to go for contributing, non-contributing additions and new construction. So right away, super clear. And then what we've heard from almost everyone is that we need flexibility in materials. And so we have a flow chart to address that. So that's where we're headed. So a quick report out on our interview findings and the public outreach and work sessions. We interviewed 143 people. 110 of those were homeowners and residents. 15 were commercial property owners and business owners. Our town council members are HPRB members and Department of Community Development staff. So what we love is that it really reflects what we see in the district, which is about 80% of the contributing properties are residential, and the majority of the folks who gave input were residents. So I think that's really important. This was our public workshop. And what we found is through the full day of public workshop and our two days of interviews, you could boil everything down to four major areas of concern. So let's just kind of summarize those quickly. One is clarifications. There's a lot of confusion, both over the process and in the guidelines. So clarifications are needed. Second is a concern by residents, contractors, HPRB members, town council members over construction and material costs, and understanding that there is a financial burden at times that is placed on people, and many people are concerned about that. The third is the materials in the guidelines and what we just talked about and needing some more flexibility. Finally is training and education. So those are our four key topics. There was generally consensus on a couple of additional items. So everyone's desire is to maintain the small-town feel, and that is a quote from over half of the people we interviewed, walkability and the scale of Herndon. There's a desire to maintain and increase property values, but allow for growth and change. And the current guidelines and processes are unpredictable. And anytime we see the word unpredictable, that's a real red flag because it's, when you can't plan your projects and schedule them and it's not predictable and cost becomes a concern, we have a problem there. So we need to make this a very predictable process. Historic materials are too expensive, difficult to find. We have a resource guide for you with links that tell you exactly where you can find everything, as well as folks who can help you get them installed. New development should complement the Heritage Preservation District. And this was pretty unanimous as well. People love the look and feel and they want things generally to fit in. So Paige is going to walk you through the next section.
So we also really wanted to ground ourselves and the guidelines in what the purpose of the local heritage district is. And I think the town manager did a good job of sort of summarizing that. We took it to sort of another level of analysis in analyzing the strengths of being in a local district. And we talked about this in our community engagement. We also, you know, wanted to focus in the guidelines about what a local historic preservation ordinance is and what it is not. What are local design guidelines? What treatment standards we want to apply to the HPRB district? And then how do we apply these guidelines to manage the change that we know will occur inevitably in every community over time? So we use the Secretary of the Interior Standards for Rehabilitation. Those are the standards that are universally applied. It's the expectation for communities that participate in the certified local government program, which Herndon does. And basically, what they do is they look at the proposed alterations in a historic district to a contributing building against its use, protection of its character, recognition of changes that have occurred over time, and whether those, in their own right, are historic. Significance, the architectural features that might be important and that might denote what makes that property contribute to the district. They encourage repair over replacement where that's possible. And then they look at what are appropriate treatments to historic fabric? What are the appropriate methodology for alterations and additions? And then we take them one step further for new construction as well. When we consider the reasons for designating a local heritage or historic district, we really look at a variety of positive effects that are sort of halo effects for the community. Encouraging heritage tourism. I have been here so many times and just marveled at the bike path that you all have through this community. And I suspect that while the path is a draw, likewise, the town square and the charming character invites people to stop and spend money and spend time in this community. The environmental impact and social impact. The walkability creates connections within the community that might not otherwise exist. The idea of providing smaller retail and storefront spaces encourages a broader mix of businesses and creates viability for smaller businesses that might not be able to compete in other parts of, say, Northern Virginia in the larger strip malls and corporate development. We also find that historic district or heritage district designation helps protect property investment. If you know that your neighbor will also meet a certain standard, then you can feel more comfortable investing in your own property. We also see just better quality of design in terms of community development and thoughtful implementation of new construction. In our offices, this is how we define the success of design guidelines. We really want to make sure that we maintain that small-town character that is so clearly recognized by all the members of this community. We want to ensure that as decisions are being made by the HPRB and the inevitable appeal might be reviewed by town council, that those decisions are made in the context of a fair and consistent and predictable process. We seek to support that enhanced property value because we think that just betters the community. We have taken a new approach to design guidelines over the past couple of years in ensuring that they are also a tool to educate property owners who might not otherwise have experience with historic properties. And also, rather than implementing a prescriptive approach about what alternative materials are allowed and which are not, we've designed a system to analyze so that you all can respond as new materials come on the market. So back to those two compelling images that Mel showed at the beginning of the presentation, we've seen a lot of trends emerge in the last three or four years. And we wanted you to understand that Herndon really is very similar to what we're seeing in a lot of other communities. We have seen a backlash against the old-school style of historic preservation. We have also seen a lot of miscommunication within communities about the intent and the implementation of design guidelines. And we find that often that has to do with a lack of clarity, both in the process and in the expectations. And it's not so much that the community disagrees about what the end result should be, it's just that there's confusion about how to get there. So we really spend a lot of time listening to the community so we can determine if that's what's going on and where we really need to focus our energy to reset the conversation. We also have seen a trend that as preservation becomes a little bit more sophisticated and there are more options for property owners in terms of building treatment, it's important to give owners tools to make good decisions. And it's important to maintain a relationship with property owners so they understand the intent, the community benefit. Particularly in a community like this where there is a fair amount of turnover and property ownership, you always have to keep that conversation going so that new residents understand that they too have a responsibility to steward properties for a community that they moved to because they loved the character of that community. The guidelines are one part of an overall system of communication, policy development, review, coordination. And so we have made recommendations in other arenas and we've provided resource guides and materials, information to help bolster the entire preservation program. Staff is also working very hard on their portion of the project, as Bryce pointed out. And we all acknowledge staff in communities across the country just have to continually focus on excellent customer service. That is a critical part of this process. So I'm going to turn this over to Mel to summarize what we heard.
Okay. So you have seen this in the interview report that is posted at the website, but we went through this again and summarized a couple of statements and ran this across the matrix to figure out where the business community, the residential property owners, the preservation board, and the town council all agreed or disagreed. And so I'd like to go through each one of these. Both town council and HPRB felt that the existing guidelines lacked a clear statement of purview and purpose, and that that was hindering their job and their duties. And so we want to make sure we have that upfront in the guidelines. The second one was interesting. There was disagreement within both town council and HPRB over the true purpose of the guidelines. Some of the members felt that the real purpose was to maintain the overall look and feel of the district, and other members felt that the duty was a little bit more fine-grained, and it was to preserve the original styles and materials of the period of significance. So I think council and HPRB will have some issues to work through to kind of build that Both HPRB and town council found that there was ambiguity in the guidance and there was unclear language. And then all four groups were confused over contributing, non-contributing, new construction, renovation. So clearly, that needs to be addressed. Then our business community really spoke up and said there was a lack of clear information on timeline and steps in the application process. HPRB echoed that. And what they said is it led to frustration on the HPRB side and on the applicant's side and resulted in some pretty contentious meetings. And it wasn't making anyone feel good or look good, and we wanted to move forward from that. Then our business community and residential property owners said, "The process is slow, it's burdensome, it's unclear, and we need to streamline it." So as Bryce said, we're working on it. Three out of the four asked for more administrative approval. And consistently, we heard that residents really trust staff. They interact with staff the majority of the time. Those are the folks they're sitting down with. And the more that we can pass over to administrative approval, that would be very much appreciated. So we'll look at that as we move through the guidelines. Business community then said, "It's really easy to miss deadlines. Then it causes time delays, which is expensive." So it's that unpredictable word again. Too many forms led to confusion and we really needed to move to an electronic submittal So then we moved on to consistency. And one of the statements was, "There's a lack of consistency in how HPRB handles applications." And that came from business community, residential, and town council. All bodies either needed or wanted additional training. And so we've seen that in the process moving forward, there will be additional training opportunities. There is a perception that guidelines are applied in a discriminatory way. And that was almost unanimous as well. And what we heard is that it affects homeowners more than commercial property owners. And the reason for that, that we heard, is that oftentimes on commercial properties, they're hiring experienced architects and contractors who know the system well, and people felt that they could kind of work around the process and kind of figure out the system. Everyone unanimously across the boards said that modern materials need to be considered. And everyone was upset that real estate agents were not informing buyers about the district. That we can't fix, but... Okay. So what can we do? So you've heard all the comments. Let's just flip through that one more time. What's good about this is that the entire community is generally on the same page. So we're starting in a good place. This is what we can do. So we are going to provide a statement of purpose and purview. We're working on streamlining the process. Clear distinction between contributing, non-contributing additions and new construction. We've got a whole separate resource guide for you for maintenance, materials, and vendors. We'll provide flexibility in materials options, provide training on the new guidelines to HPRB and town council. And we also have an outreach and education guide and ideas for community development, and we'll show you some of those ideas. So it's a basis for... So, it's a basis for HPRB to make what will then be perceived as fair and balanced decisions. So, that's what we can do. What we can't do is we can't ensure real estate agents disclose when properties are in the overlay district. So, it's not something that can be enforced in Virginia. You can work within the community to try and make that happen, but it's not something we can enforce. We can't ensure enforcement happens and is applied equitably. So, we understand that for more enforcement to happen, the town would really need more staff to do that. The third one, we debated putting up here, but we can't really ensure that residents, property owners, town staff, HPRB, and town council agree on the preservation philosophy. But we see that as our joint charge. If there are currently disagreements amongst council and the board, we hope that as we go through this process, we can form consensus so that we can provide a really solid foundation for the whole community. And finally, what we can't do is write guidelines and provide allowances that don't follow the National Park Service standards that would jeopardize the integrity of the district and cause the Virginia Department of Historic Resources to terminate your certified local government designation. So, we don't want to write you guidelines that do that. Okay. So, here's a preview, and we're just going to walk you through a couple pages of this, and then please jump in with feedback. The second slide there, the second image, is our table of contents. So, we just want you to see, section one is just introduction and history. Section two talks about the overlay district. Section three is process. So, right in the beginning, applicants will have a place to go for process. Section four and five, that red-orange color, all about contributing buildings. We always start with residential, we finish with commercial. There are more residential contributing buildings. Let me grab my water.
And I'll just add while Mel takes a quick break. Within sections four and five, where we're talking about contributing and non-contributing buildings, the first chapter is all about understanding those buildings. It's more of an educational chapter for property owners. And the second chapter is the guidelines themselves so that we can set a uniform foundation of understanding for how these buildings function and what the design characteristics are that are important.
So, in yellow, our next two chapters are non-contributing. So, you're able to immediately go to the chapter that you need to go to and not sort through 100 and some pages. Section eight is all about new construction. You're building a new building, and you're outside of the overlay or you're outside of the district, you're going to go straight to new construction. Nine and 10, nine is demolition and relocation, and 10 is our glossary and appendix and links to other documents that are important. So, from the very beginning, in red, the red-orange is contributing and the yellow is non-contributing. There will be hyperlinks all throughout the document, so you can click from section to section. You can go straight to the website. You can search for your property and know immediately where you are. We're working on this. So, we met all day with staff, and we're starting to wordsmith and move things around and finesse this. It's really important that it's very, very clear that there are really three paths. So, there's the maintain and repair path, where we'll link in the resource guide. We want to make it clear that people are welcome to come talk to staff. If you have any questions, there are a resource for you, encourage you to come in, but you don't need to do that. You don't have to fill out an application. There's just resources there for you to take care of your property. Then, we'll be moving into the administrative approval path, four steps to work through with town staff. And then, there'll be the HPRB review path. So, again, we want to break it down into clear, easy-to-understand steps so that we eliminate any confusion and make it very clear for where people need to go in the application process. You see how that plays out in the document. Everything is color-coded, there's icons, and that'll flow all the way through the document. We link to preservation briefs as well. We have modeled and rendered many, many properties in Herndon, and then we have called attention to the details and the forms that make these buildings contributing properties. And so, you'll see in the first section, many residences, commercial buildings. We talk about the style, and we provide some education on what makes those buildings that particular style and why it's contributing. This section here is really, we're debating about this, and we've heard from many residents that they were confused about how to understand where HPRB had purview. Are they looking at all four sides of my house? Are they only looking at two sides of my house? So, we want to know, is it helpful to have diagrams like this that show where a building is located and where the review board might... Okay. So, that was a question. We had some head nods. It's tough when you take topography into account and other elements. Eventually, I think, at the end of the day, if there's confusion, it's talk to staff first, but these are general guidelines. Here, we just wanted you to see again, in every section, these particular pages are talking about roofs. And we start with, we always have our maintenance and repair, and then we'll have our section on staff administrative approvals, and then we'll have our HPRB approvals. So, every element is broken down into those three sections. We'll have lots of 3D models and diagrams throughout. This particular page is talking about additions to both residential and commercial properties. Across the top line, our existing contributing buildings that have been modeled, in blue, are proposed additions, hypothetical additions that would be in compliance, and we explain why that's a good way to do that addition, why it's respectful to the contributing character. The next line down in red are additions that would not be approved, and we give an explanation on why that wouldn't be approved. And then Paige is going to talk about the material flow chart.
So, we have found that when we write design guidelines and we include a list of alternate materials that are acceptable, the next day, the guidelines are out of date because inevitably a new product is developed, a new technique is developed. So, we've taken a different approach, which does two things. It allows the guidelines to react to the changing market for alternative materials, and it also creates a bit of a valve for you all to determine what your philosophy wants to be on alternative materials. If you just look at the general outline of this flow chart, it's a bunch of yes and no questions. The questions are embedded in the yellow boxes, and they are designed to prompt a consistent analysis of whether the existing material requires replacement. And then, if the answer is yes, is it a character-defining feature? And if it is, then how do you treat that? And then, is the product appropriate? The idea is that different communities will likely answer these questions in slightly different ways, and the answers reflect the preservation philosophy. But once you set up an expectation for a particular building material, then that needs to be consistently implemented across the board. But it also allows you, as a new material comes online, and maybe the HPRB is sitting at their meeting and someone presents this new material to them, you know, without really a lot of background information, it enables them to quickly respond, at least with some preliminary feedback. So, when we post the guidelines and when we have a full draft available for you all to review, I would encourage you to really look at this and think about this as the critical tool to use to impart flexibility and also establish expectations.
Yes, sir.
I was wondering, will the cost be a factor in determining the change of materials in a situation? Economics or...
Economics really cannot be a factor in the guidelines. That is not part of what... Guidelines are intended to analyze appropriateness of building treatment. And so, the way that we've constructed this is to allow you to answer those questions consistently. Any discussion of economics would have to occur sort of outside in the policies and procedures side of things, and I would turn that over to staff if they have any preliminary thoughts on that. I don't know if you guys have really had that discussion.
A little bit, but Lisa, you can possibly jump in here too, but I think that you don't want to be put in a situation where we're evaluating the economics of it. We want to keep it as sort of an analysis of the design and the aesthetics as we're able to do and stay away from economics.
And I would add to that, when we look at consistency, I think you jeopardize consistency if you try to ascertain whether or not an individual homeowner or a business owner can handle a cost of a particular repair. Now, the way that this does answer some of the concerns is it does allow for some newer alternative materials without looking at whether person A or person B can afford something. It is allowing some of the newer materials that will probably be less expensive in some cases.
And certainly more readily available. That is one of the questions, is the historic material readily available? Are craftsmen readily available? Can the material impart the same character as the material being removed? And is it a character-defining feature? Which are all, no matter what building feature you're talking about, those should be the points of consideration when you make a determination about whether it's important to retain a historic feature to protect the integrity of the historic district.
Signy had a question also.
Yeah, I'm starting to get the impression that we're not going to get a copy of this to review ourselves.
There will be many moments of where you all can have a copy to review and comment, but we had a very lengthy discussion today with staff, and they have asked us to reorganize some things. So, the content isn't going to change, but the way the content is laid out, I think, will look a little bit different.
It's confusing. So, it's coming soon. I mean, we're almost there.
Yeah.
But we're not going to leave here tonight with a copy.
Section eight, this is in the new construction. So, this particular diagram at the top talks about siding a new building. We have color-coded diagrams showing appropriate and inappropriate places to locate accessory buildings. And then, chapter 10 is our glossary. So, we've gone through and tried to figure out everything that would not be easily understood and really put it into layman's terms. We also talk a little bit about incentive programs like federal and state historic rehabilitation tax credits. From everything that we've heard, when we've spoken with people, we understand that these are not really being utilized in Herndon, but we hope that sometime in the future they will be and that the more we can educate everyone about their availability, that they will be used and used to maintain these buildings. We finish with a link to the regulatory framework and then a cyclical maintenance checklist that anyone can take. It tells you once a year, once every two years, at seasonal changes, when you should just take a walk around the exterior of your house and check on things. It's a place to date it and make notes, and it's a good tool for just keeping up with buildings in general. And then Paige is going to talk about the resource guide.
So, we maintain in our office a library that's primarily digital of all of the best sources of material that we refer to when we're helping someone with building treatment or with a historic tax credit application or with an application to the Architectural Review Board or an HPRB. And so, what we've done is we've taken sort of the best of that information and zeroed in on those resources that would most particularly relate to the building types in the town of Herndon and put those into a resource guide. We really look at it as a toolkit because we recognize that a lot of property owners purchase a historic home because they love it and it's charming, but they might not have any experience with what that type of homeownership entails. And so, we've included information about the tax credits, which Mel referred to, a toolkit about maintaining historic building elements, some analysis by the U.S. Department of Energy and other sort of independent third parties about historic windows and what the real economics are in terms of historic window repair versus replacement. Again, just informational resources for property owners so that they get the full spectrum of data rather than relying on a single source or a Google search that might not quite yield the level of information that would be helpful. We've also included references to the Field Guide to American Houses, which will tell people a lot about their property and its style and its period of construction and what the architects were trying to do at the time that those buildings were designed, and also about the sustainability of historic buildings and how the design and some of the characteristic features really relate directly back to sustainability. We've also been, for years, building a historic trades directory. I will thank you guys for forcing us to stretch ourselves. We didn't have a robust directory for this part of the state, and so, we've really done a lot of work to try and build that for you all. We've got references for craftsmen, preservation briefs, suppliers that might not have the marketing budget of certain suppliers, and so, they might be a little bit more difficult to find when someone's looking for a vendor. We've included that information as well.
This is just kind of summarizing what Bryce already talked about, but that it is absolutely critical that the process changes be integrated with the updated guidelines. And so, that's why we've paused in giving you a copy of the guidelines tonight. Many of the processes are changing, and we want all of that to link hand in hand. And so, we have a couple weeks of revisions to do, and we didn't want to hand out a copy that's just going to change in a couple weeks. So, we'll show you the schedule in just a second. So, the last part, the fun part, I think Paige is going to talk a little bit about here, in terms of relationship maintenance and preservation must, at the end of the day, equal positive feelings in the community.
So, we both come from Norfolk, Virginia. Norfolk is a very old city. When I moved there 20 years ago, historic preservation had... There was recognition of the importance of the historic buildings and the history of the community, but typically, the preservation community had really only presented itself when there was a controversy. And so, we've spent the last 20 years trying to redefine preservation in our own community as something that's a positive, that is ever-present, should be part of all decision-making, where folks who are concerned about preservation should be engaged in every type of development, redevelopment, rehabilitation effort, and really need to establish a presence beyond just during the controversial times. So, it's taken us a while, but in the last year, year and a half, a group has formed called the Norfolk Preservation Collective with the sole mission of encouraging advocacy, education, and celebration of the history of Norfolk. That is their entire agenda. And so, this is a picture of the very first event that occurred. It was in the back of a local restaurant. The speaker is a millennial who started out opening a biscuit shop and has gradually restored, I think, four buildings. The message that he delivered at this event was that preservation needs to be for everybody, not just those of means, not just those of longstanding, but it really needs to be for everybody, and it can help define the community. Moving on from that, this organization has developed a local awards program where neighbors can nominate neighbors for awards for their good preservation work, whether it's removing vinyl siding from a house and choosing to just restore the exterior siding to its original, or whether it's repurposing a downtown building that was unused and neglected for decades and putting a new architectural office in it. They design the awards to span the whole range of property types and types of members of the community. Also, in our community, at the same time, one of our local, I guess, archivist librarians has created an Instagram page. has created an Instagram page called Vintage Norfolk, where he periodically posts photographs from the historic photo collection in the library system. And I don't know if you can quite read this, but he has almost 5,300 followers. So he's, again, communicating in a different way that's very accessible to try and help build that appreciation of historic properties. These are a few different examples. Tyler, Texas, Preservation Oklahoma, that are outreach and engagement efforts that link preservation with other activities that draw community interest. Again, all for the purpose of building an appreciation for the historic resources so that then, as the harder decisions come down the line, there's more support and positive feeling about the program.
And one thing I would point out, the section on the left is all about millennials and the next generation of property owners, and one of the sections down at the bottom says Wanderlust for History. And if you follow any of those feeds, the next generations are purposefully moving into smaller historic towns, they're traveling and visiting these places, and I think we really need to be thinking about that as well.
Lastly, we are all about bringing the next generation of preservationists up, and so we always want to make sure that any opportunity is taken to educate children about the importance of community character and about the resources that make our towns and neighborhoods special. Those of you who attended the public meeting, we had a children's activity. I think Mel had a picture of that in the presentation, but we always want to make sure that children are engaged in the conversation so they know from whence they came. And lastly, this is something that someone in my office has participated in. She's a member of the Virginia Beach Preservation Commission. They have a historic lighthouse that's owned by Preservation Virginia, located in the city of Virginia Beach. So they engaged in an outreach program during Preservation Month, which is in May, and went to four different breweries in Virginia Beach and did four different events, one a week, called Pints for Preservation, where the proceeds were then donated to Preservation Virginia in support of the lighthouse restoration. Again, just another way to access a different audience and build that support.
So finally, schedule and next steps. After our day of meetings today, in mid-December, we understand staff is going to provide comments to us, and in particular, it's comments on chapters five and seven. So those are contributing and non-contributing, and that's where we're kind of rearranging some things and integrating the changes to the process. Then we will turn around, and I'm sorry, we have the Christmas holidays, but we're going to provide the updated draft guidelines five weeks later. It would be three weeks later if we didn't have the holidays, but we're going to begin, we have a whole list of modeling and graphics sections we can get started on right now. We'll wait for comments, and then we'll start to move those sections around. The draft guidelines, so city staff will take a look at that. They'll catch any little edits they'd like us to make, and it'll be available to the public and posted to the website mid-February. And then the plan is to have the next public meeting in early March so that everyone has enough time to review and read all of the guidelines and then come to that public meeting with any questions. So thank you so much, and we're here for any questions you might have, questions and comments.
I wanted to ask about the public meeting. Are we looking, and maybe this is a question for staff, are we looking at a regular public hearing or more of like a town hall where people, it's kind of like when we had the downtown master plan, when people, it was just easier to ask questions and not such a formal kind of meeting. So I guess you can guess what I think might be more amenable? Okay. And then, of course, there would be the adoption, it would be a public hearing eventually.
Yes, the thought was that we would have a general public meeting, that people could come, they will have seen the guidelines by that time, there would be a short presentation at that meeting, and then we would hear from the public. Following that, we would actually start having public hearings where the council would be considering adoption of the draft. And again, because it would be a public hearing item, the public would be able to speak at that time as well.
Signe.
When we first discussed this, I think we had spoken about having several opportunities for people to respond. I think more than one town hall meeting might be needed.
It could be incorporated into our community roundtables, possibly. I think we'd get a good turnout for that. Just a thought. Wow, everybody's so quiet. I know you've got thoughts.
In the presentation, there's a lot of emphasis on the application process. So you see the steps, and I sort of have an impression that it's more oriented toward the applicant in some parts to help them with how to navigate through the approval process, as opposed to the current guidelines, which has a lot of detail and technical information that supports the board. So the question is, do you have a lot more of some of that more specific board guidance embedded in other parts of the report, and how do you do the balance successfully of a document to serve both the needs of the applicants and the board in terms of supporting review?
Right. And that's exactly one of the issues we're working on right now with our comments, back to the consultants. They do have a lot of information in there for both the applicant as well as guidelines for the board to be able to apply. And I would say, from what we've seen so far, it's much easier to apply these guidelines than the ones you have at this time. The information is there, it's clear. One of our comments, and why we're reluctant to release what we have so far, is right now, that information is combined in such a way that we all agree that it is a little confusing, you know, what's for the public, what's for the board? And so what the staff's going to be working on with the consultants in the next few weeks, and then the consultants will be making those changes, is really trying to separate those out so it's very clear for the homeowner as well as for the board, you know, where their role is, what it is they can do, what it is they should be doing, what process they in their role should be fulfilling.
And to drill down even farther, it's kind of the breakpoint between administrative approval and HPRB that we're trying to hit precisely. And right now, we've got the two ends of the spectrum, and we need to get that in the exact right place.
Thank you.
First of all, I'd like to say thank you.
Very logical, and I could tell a lot of time and thought went into the presentation, and also to the staff, because we've seen on the HPRB, a lot of work has gone in in developing new standards, which will help. But one thing I didn't hear, there seems to be a common theme, or should I say gripes, within the historic district, where people saying they bought a house and they didn't know they were in the district. Is there anything specific in the guidelines that will address that, or is that outside of the guidelines that we'll have to deal with separately?
That, I'm not certain how we could put that in the guidelines. We've made a few changes already. As our consultant said, we can't require that the real estate agent inform the prospective purchaser. What we have done-
They probably wouldn't, even if they were required.
Well, it depends. I mean, in some jurisdictions, that's, if you're in a historic structure, that raises the price. People want to be there. So it depends on which jurisdiction you're in. But what we can do, and what we have been doing, is some other changes not related to the guidelines. One of which was that we were successful, I want to say it was about a year ago, finally getting Fairfax County to put additional information on their tax assessment site. So if you're purchasing a house and you or your agent have the wherewithal to go ahead and check that, you will now see it no longer says you're not in a historic district, if you're not in Fairfax County's historic district. We've gotten Fairfax County to add the clause saying you're not in Fairfax County's historic district, but if you're in the town of Vienna, or the town of Herndon, the town of Clifton, I think they include, then you need to check with that local jurisdiction. So that provides that additional information that should trigger you into contacting the town to find out whether or not you're in the town's historic district.
So did the county make that change?
They did, finally, about a year ago.
I don't remember getting that confirmation. That's great.
Yeah.
It's a little ambiguous, though.
Yeah.
Because my job is to look at those, and it really, I don't feel, is a lot of help, but more than there was.
Right. Well, we have lobbied the General Assembly to try and get that enabling legislation for this type of thing, and it's-
Multiple years.
It's not worked.
And one of the issues with that, too, is that what is compelled under state code to be disclosed are all negatives. This was once a drug house, this was once this, or this was once that. It was something always negative. This is a more positive thing, and it just didn't fit into that language of the law. And there was nobody to carry the water, and real estate agents were pushing back against it.
Now, the other thing that we're working on right now, that Chris and Bryce are working on, is actually to have different street signs within the district that indicate that this particular street or segment of street is part of the heritage district or historic district. So that will inform anybody, if they notice the street sign, that will inform them that this is part of the historic district, which I think will be a big step forward, because anybody will see that.
Okay, I'm seeing all kinds of hands. I'm just going to start with the vice mayor and kind of go down and around, if that's okay, because I don't want to miss anybody. Go ahead.
Yeah. The mayor and I were first on the council in 2010, and we've known this has been an issue, and so this is nine and a half years into this that we've been trying to get a change. But as we talked to the Virginia Municipal League and the lobbying that could be done, they did finally pass legislation that said it's the buyer's responsibility to find out X, Y, and Z, including whether you're in a historic district, because the Virginia Realtor lobby is so big, they have prevented this. Not all Realtors, because a lot of Realtors want to show these spots, so it really is up to the buyer to be aware and find out whether the place floods or other things that are not going to be on a deed. And yes, Fairfax County did make that little change, but it really doesn't tell you much. And I think that was it.
I'll come back to you.
What that change did do, though, it doesn't tell you much about Herndon or Vienna or Clifton, but it did take off, or it did say no.
No.
And it took that away, and caveated that no. You're not in a Fairfax district, you could be in the other ones.
Right, which was really confusing, because you would just assume that's the only district to look for.
Correct.
So Cesar and then Bill? We haven't heard from you guys.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Great presentation, by the way, great information. I noticed on a couple sites, something that caught my eye was this backlash thing was mentioned a couple times. Was there a correlation with what I would say, a lack of clarity or vision or some statement as to the purpose of the historic district?
My observation from working in communities sort of in the Mid-Atlantic region is that particularly when there is a lot of activity occurring in a historic district, it is very easy to lose sight of that public engagement need. And also, when you have communities where there's a lot of turnover of property ownership, the challenge for ensuring that the expectations and requirements are clear is even greater. And third, as the method of communication has changed and as our reading comprehension timeframe has been reduced, the old version of the guidelines that every community had kind of wasn't working anymore, which is why we've, I mean, this is the second community where we have taken a very different approach, not only to the format of the design guidelines we're producing, but also the public engagement piece, where we stopped and took the time to interview nearly 150 people and really talk about what the needs are so we get the guidelines right. And I think those issues seem to be common in the communities where there's a backlash.
So, thank you. That makes sense. I just wanted to bring that up, because one of the big concerns I heard most, and I think you highlighted it, was an inconsistent application of these guidelines, because we didn't have necessarily the clarity at the top of what that was for. And just on a side note, you mentioned Norfolk, and great place, and there's no right answer to this, but I just kind of want to get your input in terms of, describe Norfolk's look and feel of the town, and then what's your impression of Herndon's look and feel? Again, don't want to put you on the spot, but just, it'll help me certainly kind of position some of this forward.
Well, I'm biased, because my father was the town planner for Herndon when I was a child.
That's called disclosure. Let's go.
So I actually remember when the planning offices were in the basement of Town Hall, and when I would go as a kid over there to play. I-
In the door cells?
Yeah.
So, you know, from a marketing spin, how would you sell this or position this, the look and feel?
So I would classify Herndon in a lot of ways as similar to Suffolk in our region, which is, you guys are the last close-in small town in northern Virginia. No one can compete with that, and you have to protect that in whatever way is most meaningful for the community, but you have to protect that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bill?
Yeah, I want to thank you as well. I know we've been working for a couple of years, and I know some of us gave you a lot of information, so I appreciate you working on these things. My concern is the flow chart, in that that can be a great thing. I mean, I'm in cybersecurity, so flow charts, if they're best practices, are amazing, and flow charts, if they're trial balloons, can be absolute disasters. So is this based on a best practice? Is this-
This is actually something that we first developed for Norfolk about seven years ago, and their guidelines are different, and their approach is different than Herndon's.
Are they based on the same department interior?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, based on the same standards, but the preservation philosophy in the community is different.
Understand.
And so we modified that flow chart, but it has been tested, and we have modified it for other communities as well.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. And then I saw Leslie.
Hi. One of the things that I'm especially thrilled to see is the sourcing manual. For six years, in my experience, and having lived in this town for 35 years and a 1885 Queen Anne Victorian, sourcing has been essential, and it is one of the beachhead issues that we as a board have always had issue with as volunteers. We spend our time, you know, trying to help homeowners off record, or, you know, literally helping them source especially roofing materials, which I noted in your presentation, you're highlighting windows, you're highlighting perhaps, you know, polywood trim, et cetera, but do you have some specifics, hopefully, on some of the more cost-effective roofing materials that can be applied to especially shingled roof, as well as other types of historically correct materials that would fall in the guidelines?
We treated each building material type in the same way, in the same format. So Mel selected sections of the guidelines, but we didn't show them all to you. The guidelines right now, I think, are about 120 pages long, so that would have made for a lengthy presentation. So there is a section on roofing material, both in the guidelines and also in the resource guide. And in the resource guide, there are resources for folks who choose to reinstate historic materials that are beyond their useful life, and there are also alternative roofing materials included. So we tried to cover both bases.
Great. Thank you.
And given that you all have been working in this community and reviewing applications, if there are resources that you see missing from our guide during that review process, please share those with us, and we'll add them in.
I'm sorry, we appreciate that. We do actually a lot of training, and the town provides us a lot of training, where we travel on our own, and we have met with other communities. We've met with state representatives, and there are other databases, and we've been trying to incorporate that and pull it back into our situation here as well. So that's great news. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you have some? Mr. Chairman?
Thank you. I must say, the organization and the breakout of this is much superior to anything that I had imagined you would come up with. that I had imagined you would come up with. So I thank you very much for that. Seems much more available, understandable to the public. I like the addition of the guide more processed for them. That's not at all in our current guidelines. The other question I had was, you had early on said there were sort of two philosophies that are clashing. We need to resolve that, it seems to me, in some fashion. And I don't know if counsel and us propose to do that. There you go. Maybe we need another meetings between us just to hash that sort of thing out.
I think that's a great idea.
See who's where. I'm not sure those two philosophies are totally mutually exclusive either. So I would, that's my thought.
We think there might be an element of just different language at play, because actually the two philosophies exist within each body. So it's not like the two philosophies are doing this, they're doing this.
We have to have a set of arm wrestling among ourselves.
I'm not arm wrestling either, Bill.
Pretty, and then I'll call on Maggie.
Thank you. Great presentation, by the way. So I have a few questions, actually, so I will just put them all together. I've been a council member for the past 12 months, and based on what I heard, what I saw, and I think this is a perfect time for us to address some of these issues. A lot of our, many of our residents in the historic district, they even, you know, ask us questions when we go and visit them. Can I opt out? Right? That's the question I have heard a lot. I don't know if this guideline can address that, or if not, then how can we, you know, discuss HPRV and Town Council and maybe find a win-win situation on that one? Because I know this guideline does not talk about the economics, but what I have seen is, you know, most of the issues right now with the SB, following the SBRV guideline while maintaining their houses comes down to economics. So I'm not sure how we can take care of that issue, but that issue we definitely should and can discuss. Another thing is, let's allow some more time for the residents, and us as well, because we even do not have the draft yet, right? So maybe we need, you know, a few months, because we know that.
We have the timeline.
Absolutely. Because HPRV guideline came during the early 90s, and they have hardly been through changes and updates. So that means, once we put those in place, I'm sure those are going to be there for a long time. So let's do more exercise on that one, and let's involve more people, 200 residents in the historic district. And I'm sure we have not heard from all of them, so how can we make sure we can reach out to everyone? And how can we make sure that their concern is properly heard and addressed is another thing. We are always talking about walkable downtown, so I hope, you know, this guideline talks about the walkability, because that's one of the biggest selling point, and that's what makes, you know, keeps the small-town flavor alive as well. And also, you know, we're talking about environmental and fiscally responsible way of maintaining the buildings, right? When we talk about fiscal responsibility, for example, a lot of people ask, can I install a solar panel? Right? So how can we take care of those issues, even though it is a historic district? Like, you know, everybody says, not everything old is historic, right? So how can we make sure, within the district, which needs to be preserved and which does not have to be preserved? I think we can do more discussion on that one and come up with a brilliant idea, so that, you know, it can, may not make everybody happy, but makes the majority of the people happy. So, thank you.
Who was going to add?
Sort of building on the opt-out issue, one thing that you guys touched on among the things that you can't do is a policies and procedures manual. And when we're talking about that, when we're talking about economics, one of the things that we frequently encounter from the HPRB is folks saying, you know, this is really too expensive. No one has yet argued economic hardship, per se, but it seems like, you know, this is more maybe for staff and for council, that to get some sort of guidelines in that policies and procedures manual, or that address how homeowners who are having difficulty affording what's in the guidelines, that they can, they have a system of documentation or whatever that they can appeal to the HPRB in terms of that. Also, another thing that we frequently get is things that are done ex post facto. So we will have, on one hand, an approved plan that is then changed on-site to something else, and we, you know, we have no way of enforcement. And if the council under policies and procedures could give some teeth to that, and there've been things where we approve something and it's just not done, or that the things are completely changed, when we do that, some of them are major, draw major unsolicited comments from both homeowners and visitors alike that I've seen. So something like that. And maybe that's also, how does the community know? Maybe that goes along with, you know, whenever we replace a street sign, we're going to replace it this way, or something like that. So I think that's really something that could go hand-in-hand with what you guys are doing. Other thing is, one of the little sections that you have here is saving windows, saving money. I would really appreciate if the way that you address that were like permanent-specific case studies and costs, rather than something that is more, you know, theoretical of, because we all know that it's cheaper, we don't know all that, but it can be cheaper to simply repair a window. But what's the benefit of that in terms of energy, and in terms of resale, and in terms of appearance, putting storm windows on? You know, what are the benefits of that? But if we had something that was more than just, hey, this can be done, and the cost is less, and means construction standards say this, something in northern Virginia that says, hey, this is an experience with this contractor who did this and saved this much money, that would really, because the last thing we want to hear as folks in HPRV is to be saying, no, this is cheaper, and the homeowner's saying, no, it's not. That that you're pointing to is not what my contractor says. So, just two comments.
Is there anybody who hasn't spoken yet that would like to speak? Yes, sir.
I got one thing I wanted to know, is there going to be any document in the next presentation where there is a comparison between the old historic guidelines and any changes made to those guidelines? The reason I'm asking is, it was created back in 80s or 90s, I guess, and it was, somebody's vision was there, somebody put goals in there, and it has served town well. So I would like to see something, if we are going to keep some of those guidelines, and why we are keeping them, and if we're going to get away from it, why we are getting away from that.
Okay. Bryce is taking notes. I see. He's writing feverishly. Okay, anybody else that hasn't spoken already? Okay, Sydney, I think you had something, too.
Yes.
I have some stuff, too, but I'm trying to wait till the end, because usually my stuff gets covered if I wait.
I want to thank you for my favorite bit of this, which is relationship maintenance. I think that is the key point, because we have an extremely talented staff. We have people in the community who really want to preserve their houses, but who may, for some reason or other, not have had a lot of success with that. And I think having a staff and have relationships with homeowners, and more continuous relationships with homeowners, and having homeowners having more continuous relationships with each other can solve some of the problems that we're so concerned about. Cost, where to find the things that they're looking for, what has worked for them. And I know in Norfolk, and I forget the other 10, we're talking about, that seemed to come from the community. But I do think that we should try to inspire members of the community. I mean, I think that there's already people who help each other in the historic district, but I know that there are some people who move in here and don't know those people, and don't necessarily have a way of figuring out how to get together with them. So I really love that piece, and I'm very grateful to you for highlighting that.
That's the perfect segue to what I was going to say, because I totally agree. And one of the really softer kind of issues that's been really hard, I think particularly for our board members, and then especially when it is appealed, cases appealed to the Town Council, is like, these are our neighbors. I mean, we usually know, someone on the board knows the person who's coming to appeal to the board or to the council. And when the guidelines have been confusing, everybody's confused, it just, it creates angst. So I think we're already starting with the new setup. It's going to be more clear and hopefully eliminate a big chunk of that, because we all know exactly what we're looking at and what's expected. I wanted to ask a couple of questions. I don't know if this would go in the guidelines, or maybe it's more of a policies and procedures thing, but I live in a contributing structure in the downtown, and every time I've gone through the HPRB, it's offered that you can come, kind of like a pregame, where it's not really on the agenda, but it's a discussion item. And every time we've done that, that's where we get all the great information, because we're taking advice, and before we're officially on the docket, and you have a contractor scheduled, and then have to wait. It's just really helpful. And I'm wondering if that's something we would like to consider requiring, instead of just suggesting it? Because I would guess that a lot of people are like, oh, I don't need to do that, I'll just go. Why would I go to an extra meeting? But it really is so helpful. So that's a thought. And then with the ongoing communication, every month I sign a stack of welcome letters to new residents and new business owners who move into the town. And I'm wondering, there's, we could do it manually, there's only like 200 structures, but there's probably a database, or somebody smarter than me could figure out a way to look at this. We could consider having a separate welcome letter that's highlighting the historic district, you know, it's what it already says, welcome to town, you found your, you know, your great hometown, we're so excited you're here. Also, how awesome is it that you're in the historic district? Here are some resources, you know, please call Bryce, or the Mayor, or somebody, if you want to talk about how to get involved and how you can, you know, really be a part of a community. And I think that could be a pretty simple, the hardest part will be just cross-referencing the addresses to make sure we don't miss anyone, but that could be a way, right off the bat, to alert people that they've moved into the, I don't know why, we've never thought of that.
Bill could do that.
And was there anything else?
I think along with that, too, to set realistic expectations, that some things are going to take a little bit longer. So if we set the right expectations, that will alleviate a lot of the frustration.
And then, this is a question, right now, homeowners or business owners or property owners come to the HPRB, and if they disagree with the decision, they appeal that to the Town Council. Is that a Virginia code issue? Or is that something that the town of Herndon has decided is the process? It's a town thing? Okay. Want to chew on that, then? Well, I'll just throw it out there, it becomes a political issue when it comes to the Town Council. It's different from an appointed board, or a different set of citizenry. And so I think that council members have felt pressured before because of it becoming political in nature. And I'm not pointing fingers at anyone in particular, it's just we're human beings, you feel those pressures sometimes. So I wonder if that's something to think about, if there's a different route for appeal. I'm not saying that I think that's, you know, what we should do, but I am wondering. I assume that it was a code issue, so.
There are other, there are some communities in Virginia who skip their council, and the appeal goes straight to court, which is an option.
Yeah. That'd seem awesome.
Yeah. And then there are some communities that have sort of very clear procedures for what council considers on appeal. The language that's used in Norfolk is the alleged illegality or improper action. So it takes the emotional part out of the official conversation, but it doesn't ever take it out of the room, right?
Of course.
Yeah.
But I think that, I mean, both sets of board members, Town Council and HPRB, have been criticized for not being consistent, or doing one thing one time, and every case is different, we realize that, but while we're trying to get everything as consistent as possible, I think that's something to maybe think about, unless everybody thinks that's a terrible idea, in which case, never mind. Sydney?
I was thinking that the things that seem to concern us the most are the policies and procedures, not the guidelines. How do we respond when someone tells us that they just can't do it? Or how do we respond when someone says that it's been, well, not even how do we respond, but what are our procedures for making sure that people don't have those concerns? And I don't really know what a policies and procedures guide looks like. I gather we don't have one, because I've never seen it. So maybe that's something we could work on as well. Because at cost, you know, somebody, having an architect do something, and then somebody else using that architect's drawings, and, you know, I mean, all these things, they have to be, they have to happen fairly regularly, and as these roofs start falling apart, because the 100 years is up, we're going to run into these in large, well, not large numbers, but in bigger numbers than we're used to. So I really do think we need a policies and procedures manual.
And I think, I'm hopeful, like you, Sydney, that the ongoing communication, like the checklist in there that says, here's what you should do once a year, I'm like, I can't wait to get my hands on that, because that would be super helpful, even if you're not in the historic district.
Well, I don't know if this is appropriate time, but in response to your appeal issue, right now it goes straight from the board to the council. Maybe you consider sort of a middle step. In courts, judge makes a decision, person's unhappy with it can file a motion for reconsideration with the judge, and he or she may or may not change, but they can look at things that they might not have thought about, or maybe look at it a little differently. Because we're sitting up there making a decision at a particular point in time, maybe there's something we really didn't consider.
We do reconsider back to the board.
Bring it back to the board first, and then go to you. I don't know if that's, would add time, but might take some of the heat off.
I'd imagine the appeal is very expensive for most people.
Well, to court, it is.
Yeah, I don't like the straight to court thing.
Paying an appeal to the court.
No, no, I'm not, I'm not suggesting that.
No, no, I mean, so that's a good thing, another way to give them another bite at the apple.
Because we do want to be helpful, and we do want people to be able to preserve their homes and afford to do it. But when, but it seems like we don't have a lot of tools for that right now, because the guidelines are what they are. So I guess that's the whole reason.
Madam Mayor, if I could just jump in for a sec?
Please.
To Sydney's point, we do have procedure guides currently, but they're out of date, like many things are. So we are going to be going through a very robust update to those, and those are going to become available the same time that the draft is, the guidelines are going to become available. So you'll have a chance to look at those and respond at that point. Madam Mayor, we do have a welcome letter ready to go. We were going to work it into, I think, to the first utility bill, but working it into your welcome package probably makes more sense, so we'll coordinate with that.
Association.
Yeah, yeah.
Madam Mayor, and I think that goes back to, I think, I forget which one of you mentioned, not having any consideration from an economic perspective. And I think that's the double-edged sword we grapple with, right? Because it is a very personal thing. It's my home, I don't want to spend 150K. I could, but I don't want to, or I can't afford it. So are you telling me I have to leave my home? And that's, I think, the big thing that, for a lot of us, that we're just not comfortable sort of putting that through a process. I'm an IT guy, too, I love flow charts. Very clear. But there's that human element. And maybe some guidance on how other towns have dealt with that would help us.
Any other comments or questions? I'm sure we'll all have more as we go home and think more about this. Yes, sir?
On that appeals issue that we're all talking about, are there any examples in Virginia where there is a new in Virginia where there is a neutral body, an educated neutral, you know, one that's, that's versatile with the, with the, or well, versed rather, in the guidelines, where it, it's not town members, it's, it's a neutral body that can then review?
I don't want that business. To be honest, not that I'm aware of. If I weren't standing in front of folks who are part of a certified local government, I would say that that is the best path to ensure proper decision-making. The concept of the certified local government program is to identify and establish a relationship between local government, the state historic preservation office, and then the National Park Service. And in doing that, there are standards that the Commonwealth of Virginia has to become a certified local government, and those standards require the members of the HPRB to meet certain qualifications. So the intent is that then you are that body, as uncomfortable as that might be some days. But what I would say is that-
Well, I'm talking about healing what we-
Right, right. What I-
I don't think any of us got into any of these roles because we were afraid to feel uncomfortable.
Right, sure.
I just wanted to ask that question, because I, I didn't know if, if we were required by, you know, the Dillon Rule or something like that that made us have to do it. I mean, we've been doing it for years, and we're all still alive, so.
What I would say, just to kind of round out that response, is that, that the intent is that if a neutral, well-informed, well-educated body has made the decision, then if there is disagreement, what is the design of the next step in the process? And what are the considerations that should be made in that next step? As much as by whom? The state certified local government coordinator is always available if you all feel like you're on, if you feel like you want to reevaluate or consider whether other communities handle something differently, anything like that, as you're going through your regular business, and so that might be a resource that you could use. But the idea is that once the decision makes it through HPRB, if the process is sound and the HPRB is qualified, then the appeal should be kind of a narrow set of questions that are being considered.
And I think that's exactly right, and that's where we have, when, when councils have gone astray, it's because a lack of focus on the very narrow decision that we're able to make. And it's, and it's difficult because we don't see these a lot. So, and it's a different sort of decision than every other thing we vote on, which is, yes, we like it, or no, we're not proving that, and an appeal is different. So it sounds like getting that narrow focus and exactly making, just what we've done with the guidelines, it's very clear how you go through the process. We probably need a flow chart for us in much the same way. Yes, sir?
And another thing, I think, process-wise, when that comes to council, and it's just been my short experience, we have to make a decision then and now, as opposed to kind of doing a little more research, absorbing, hearing, sort of a counter view of what was decided. So maybe it's a change in that process, where we don't have to decide that evening, right? We can like get more into it. Just a thought.
Well, I'm just-
You know, because it's like, work sessions are messy for us, right?
Sure, well, yeah.
And people don't see that.
And we don't get to talk about appeals at a work session because of the way that's set up.
Procedures, correct. Right, that's what I'm saying.
Well, people around this table could probably have a conversation about how to make that work better or not, and we probably should meet more often than we do, so.
Yes. I, I do have one question. So many of the times when we have to judge something, the person that we're, that we're, that who's, we're making a decision on doesn't realize why instantly, as soon as they decide to appeal something, nobody can talk to them. The staff can't talk to them, we can't talk to them, no one can talk to them. It must be intensely frustrating. And if the, if they were more aware, right after, maybe we're already doing this and I don't, and I don't know it, but if they were aware the second that we, that they can make an appeal, but if they make an appeal, they have to understand that they can't talk to us anymore, or we can't answer them, right? So when somebody gets out of a meeting and it's gone a way they didn't want it to, if at that point they were told, you can appeal this, but you have, until you appeal it, you can talk to people, but once you've appealed it, the staff won't talk to you and the, and the council won't talk to you, because it, it creates bad-
Maybe that's where the reconsideration idea might come in handy.
Before, before it gets to the level where they're appealing something to us, that they realize that we can talk to them all we want and all they want until they appeal, and they should take advantage of that while they can. Does that make sense, or?
And it's probably more staff that they should be working with and not, not us.
Right. But, but at the same point, that, you know, the staff isn't going to say-
You look like you had something to say, no, okay. Okay.
So is that self-imposed in terms of the council? Do we do that just through our own sort of?
You're, you're acting as the, you're the appeal, you are the body that is hearing the appeal, so you're, so to answer that in a legal sense, for one of you or many of you to be speaking to an individual about a decision that's going to be made by the entire body would, would be wrong, so.
So how is it different, someone lobbying us to, I mean, I guess I'm going back to his flow chart.
Lobbyists come and talk, because it's more of a legislative body, not a-
Well, because it's got some-
Actual situation relative to that person.
And we're also talking about the, what is in the best interest and the best action for the, best practice for the body to take as a whole, not as individual people as a whole. I think most individuals that are represented by council are represented by a, maybe even a developer or, you know, a builder or something, understand that, and, you know, I mean, I think it's something that staff does convey, CD staff, community development staff, does convey to individuals that do appeal. You know, they, they can still speak to staff about, about issues, but, but those individuals can't be giving them advice at that point about their appeal.
So, so you think the staff has already told them that before the appeal is made? Or they, or do they?
No, no, not specifically.
Yeah, we've had a number of people come to us and say, well, I didn't, I didn't, you know, I've tried to talk to you guys and I can't.
I mean, that is something that we can, that if you're talking about outside of HPRB, we can certainly address that in the letter to them, but as far as this particular body, you are, you are acting as the arbitrary decision-maker on the appeal.
I opened up a can of worms.
If you don't discuss it, then it just festers.
But again, is that, just for me, because I'm, I'm dense, is that, is that Commonwealth law, or is that town imposed?
That's best, best legal practices.
Best legal practice. Best legal-
For the entire body and individuals within that body.
So that's not something required, but more like recommended?
Because the best practice is-
You know, that's legal practice, I would like to- Possibly, this is a, this is a discussion that we should have maybe outside of this discussion of HPRB in order to understand-
I think this is one of those discussions that we need their input to.
I think, I don't know, and I don't step on town councils, or town attorneys.
CEO, U N, S E L.
Correct. But on an appeal, you're determining whether the board acted within its purview properly, not whether you like the decision, or whether you like what the person proposed.
It does not. It is not a, it is not a de novo appeal and do-over. It's, it's not a de novo-
They're not looking at the guidelines, they're looking at the actions of the HPRB.
And if they were in line with the guidelines.
Well, whether they applied the guidelines properly.
Well, perhaps when we have new, updated, clearer guidelines, this will be easier.
But the fact, but the fact that the council is not supposed to discuss an appeal is no different from the Board of Zoning Appeals is not supposed to be meeting with the citizens or applicants when they have an appeal, it's no different.
Except that that is contained in the Code of Virginia.
Right, that's, that's my point. That's, that's my point, right?
Zoning is different, yeah.
Zoning is specific.
Okay, we'll talk.
So what you're saying is, it's not in the Code of Virginia, but best legal practices is that the deciding body should not be discussing with the appellant?
And I, I would say that's also very commonly applied best practice. We do training with the National Alliance of Preservation Commissions, and that is their guidance. In there, they have an ethics document and a procedures document, and that is very consistently applied, so that you don't find yourself in murky territory.
Well, we're trying to get out of murky territory here.
That makes sense. It's, it's only, it's, it's very frustrating when somebody wants to reach out to you and show something or talk to you, and then you won't be able to or in a position to answer them. But what you just said makes sense, but at the same time, being in a position where you don't even talk to is very frustrating, so.
Well, I think our ongoing communication piece can help make some of this more out there for people to understand.
And if all of you are, if all of you are answering that you cannot discuss with them, then no one will be discussing it with them, so it is-
Right, and just for, again, to clarify, it is not a law, it is a best practice guideline suggestion.
It's a, it's a legal opinion of the town attorney, so that's, that is-
And many other attorneys.
And it, it opens the decisions, the decision that we will eventually make up to question if we discussed it with that person.
Well, I thought-
I get it.
It sounds like we're nearing closing, and I, I would be, I would be remiss if I did not point out that out of the 143 people we interviewed, one person loved the guidelines and the process exactly as they are, so we have one, one super fan of the current process.
We have one satisfied customer.
Six percent.
Okay.
Zero.
Well, thank you.
Just joking.
So just to kind of wrap up, I don't know if staff, town manager, or Bryce, does staff have any thing that you feel that you need to, to say?
Not really, other than just, just thanking you all for being here, thanking the consultants for, for helping us through this journey, and that's it.
We do, in just a second, I just want to reiterate the next steps that in mid-December the staff comments will go to the consultants, right after the first of the year. Due to the holidays, there'll be an updated draft mid-February, they will go public, and we will have a series probably of public meetings starting in March. So keep your ideas coming, if you think of anything, please send those to the town clerk and the town manager, so that can be dispersed to all of us. And I am really excited about this, so if there is no further discussion or comments, I do need a motion to adjourn, please.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, and we are adjourned at 8:43. I don't know how many of us voted aye to-